Five years ago?
Mark.
You guys told me. He said he's out.
Yes, I said.
I told him he's out. You told me the last time I was good.
You did?
Yeah.
We all said it last time.
You all raised it and I said you were good?
No, maybe not with you. I know we all raised it a while back.
Yeah.
And as long as we put it on the record, it was okay.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean it's okay.
It's up to your call. That's why we're bringing it up.
He's not going to object. So that doesn't make it okay.
Right.
It's the other people.
Absolutely.
That you have to worry about.
Not worried about anybody.
Not worried about anybody.
I'd highly recommend them. How's that?
How's that? See what I got to do with her? Let's talk about, because, you know, if I had known this like in advance, I would have like been a little bit more prepared for you.
I didn't get any discount, I'll tell you that.
That ain't me though.
I didn't get the family discount.
It's not like he's building a new thing. It's right on his.
The family? All right. While you're looking, we're going to stand and say the pledge. Mr. McEnon, do you need us to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening. Madam Secretary, have we met the requirements for the sunshine laws?
Yes, Chairman, we have.
Okay. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Okevich?
Here.
Councilman Delena?
Here.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Kelly? Ms. Lee? Mr. McEnon?
The President.
Ms. O'Leary?
Here.
Mr. Velosen? Ms. Montilla? Chairman Tai?
Here.
Mr. Rogoff? Mr. Cornell? Mr. Leon Cavallo?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
We have a memorialization of resolutions to place at Cervel LLC. What's your pleasure? Need a motion to memorialize the place at Cervel LLC.
Take a motion we memorialize?
We have a second?
Second.
Any questions on that? If not, I'll take a roll call.
Mr. Okevich?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the final version.
I need an acceptance of the August 21, 2019 Planning Board minutes.
May I make sure we accept those minutes?
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Site plan subdivision hearings, American Pile Driving Equipment Site Plans, Hortal Street, Cervel, New Jersey, Block 59.01, Lot 1.06. Mr. Page? Oh, his office? Okay. He's not going to.
Paige is disappointed. I'm not Ken Page, but.
Okay.
I'm his associate.
Right. Could you give us your name, please, with reference?
Yes. My name is Kiara Mancini of Hail Run Page.
Have you received the professional reports that have been generated in this matter?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions on any of them?
No.
Do you agree to make them part of the record and put them in evidence?
Yes.
Do you have any objection to complying with any of those terms, any of the terms and conditions that are contained in those reports?
No.
And so those reports are? A report generated by Jake Fornell dated September 11, 2019, and these attachments related thereto. There's your report from John Leon Cavallo dated September 7, 2019. Are there any other reports?
No.
All right, thank you. We'll make those reports part of the record, enter them into evidence, and counsel has agreed to that her client will comply with any terms and conditions that are contained in those reports.
Okay.
I just want to confirm with Board Secretary Ms. Magnani and Mr. Rogoff that they received our notice package and that it's appropriate to take jurisdiction at this time.
I reviewed it and it's in proper form. We have jurisdiction.
Thank you. My name is Kiara Mancini and I have the pleasure of representing APE New Jersey LLC, which is located at 401 Hortal Street here in the borough of Cervel. This is an application for minor site plan for the expansion of an outdoor storage area and the modification of the parking area. The applicant is requesting relief from the following bulk variances. One, the location of the parking area within the front yard setback. Two, the height of the outdoor storage, of the fence in the outdoor storage area. And three, the landscape buffer area, which is an existing condition. I will begin by calling Mr. Andrew French, professional engineer, to testify as to the existing conditions of the site as well as the proposed improvements. I will then call Allison Coffin, professional planner, to address the requirements that must be met for the board to grant the variances. I have Scott Kennel, traffic expert here. I don't plan to call him, but if you have any questions with regard to traffic or parking, he is more than happy to get sworn in. And finally, I have the regional manager of APE New Jersey LLC, Paul Cusick, here. I don't plan to call him, but if you have any remaining questions after our presentation with regard to operations of the business, he's more than happy to be sworn in as well. May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So you want to raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board in this matter is the truth, so help you God? Well, is it the truth?
Yes, I do.
So help you God means, you know. But if you affirm?
Yes.
It doesn't apply, so. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mister French? Credentials?
Yes. Andrew French. I work for French and Perella Associates. I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And you've been here before?
Yes, I have.
I need a motion to accept his credentials. All in favor? Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
If I may begin by having Mr. French mark his exhibits, A1 and A2.
Yes, so this is.
Is it part of the plans?
Yes.
Is it altered in any way?
This particular sheet is not part of the plans.
A1.
Okay. This particular sheet is an enlarged map. It's an aerial photograph of the surrounding properties, just to illustrate the existing conditions. So on this map, you'll see in purple is actually the outline of the project site, which is along Hortal Street. It's Block 5901, Lot 1.06. It's approximately 2.1 acres. It's located in the SED, Special Economic Development Zone. And American Pile Driving Equipment has been there since they obtained site plan approval in 2004. As you can see by this map, on the south side is Hortal Street, but on the surrounding of the property, on the east, south, and west are all commercial industrial uses along that same businesses as American Pile Driving. They all have outdoor storage. It's all similar type of uses. On the north side of the property is actually an existing railroad. It's an active railroad for freight. So that's on the north side of the property. So that's basically the existing conditions that are out there now. It's an existing 9,000-square-foot building. There is an existing outdoor storage area on the east into the rear of the building. And then on the front, on Hortal Street, there is a parking area with two access driveways off of Hortal Street. That's basically the existing conditions.
And, Mr. French, do you want to take us through the proposed conditions or the proposed improvements for this application?
Yes. So this is actually a color rendering of the improvements of the landscaping plan sheet. One of, the landscaping plan is part of the set revised August 7, 2019. So the purpose of this landscape plan is to show you the proposed minor site improvements that we're looking to have approval for. The business, American Pile, has grown tremendously over the past few years, and they need additional outdoor storage area. So currently, the, from the building, frontage of the building, there's a eight-foot-high vinyl fence that along the front of the property to the eastern property line. That is the existing storage area now. So what we're proposing to do is take a portion of the front parking area and relocate the fence to enclose that portion of the eastern front parking area to make it outdoor storage, as well as to the east of the existing storage area of enlarging that outdoor storage area by about 25 feet by 150 in that location. This will give them the additional storage they need, but it will also enclose that area as well. So by taking up a portion of the front parking area for storage, we're looking to add parking spaces along the front of the property. Currently, there is an existing driveway that comes in, and there's only parking along the front closest to the building. So we're adding additional parking off of that existing driveway, another eight parking spots for a total of 14 parking spaces. So the ordinance requires 12. We'll have 14 parking spaces. It will be compliant. So basically, that is the proposed improvements that we're seeking approval for at this point.
Mr. French, I just want to quickly go through the statutory elements of the site plan with regard to grading. If you could just give us an overview.
Yes, certainly from a grading perspective, the parking area in the front that we're looking to do is already relatively very flat. So there's minimal grading going to occur there. To the rear, on the eastern side, the reason why that area wasn't used for storage now is some steeper grades that are there now. It's a slight berm. So what we're proposing to do is actually construct a retaining wall along that portion of the property so we can flatten out the area contiguous with the other storage and make it usable space. From a grading perspective, it'll still be compliant with all the ordinance requirements for grading the site and be stable conditions.
And drainage?
Yes. So for drainage, there's less than a quarter acre of new impervious coverage, less than an acre of disturbance that we're proposing. So stormwater management is not required. By doing the minimal grading we're doing, we're maintaining the existing drainage patterns into the storm sewer system that's out there today. So there'll be no impact on the surrounding properties. It's all going to be controlled within that existing storm sewer system.
Landscaping and lighting?
For landscaping, what we're introducing is along the frontage of Hortal Street, where the proposed parking is, there'll be evergreen shrubs along there to screen out the new parking spaces. And then where the new vinyl fence will be surrounding the front storage, we're enhancing that area with evergreen shrubs, but evergreen trees as well to screen the storage area, but also enhance the frontage along Hortal Street. As far as the lighting, their existing lighting is out there now that was approved on the original site plan approval. They're 20-foot, 25-foot-high LED fixtures. There's three poles that are located, one near the existing front of the building parking area, and two more where the new storage would be proposed. And there's also building-mounted fixtures that face into the outdoor storage area. So as far as proposed lighting, we're only proposing one light pole, which should be in the center of where the new proposed parking space is to safely illuminate that, that area. And that'll be a 25-foot-high LED light fixture, which will be compatible and consistent with other existing fixtures out there.
And circulation?
As far as circulation, as I mentioned before, there's two existing access driveways that lead into the site. The one furthest to the east is a two-way driveway, and now that'll lead into the expanded storage area with a gate. The other driveway, which is existing, is a two-way driveway. It's 30-foot wide. That leads you to the front parking area, but it also leads you to the rear of the site where the other outdoor storage area in the building access is.
And parking, which we've discussed a little bit.
Yeah, so the parking, the ordinance requires 12 parking spaces for the proposed use. We have 14 parking spaces. So we have more than the ordinance requires. Also, the operation, there is nine employees there. So again, they have minimal visitors that come to this type of operation. So the 14 parking spaces is more than enough for the operational use.
And lastly, signage?
We're not proposing any new signs except for one. Traffic control stop sign will be put in at the exit of the main access driveway on the Hortal Street. But there is no signage being proposed for this application.
And at this time, if I may, Mr. Chairman, go through certain portions of Mr. Cornell's report where he.
And then the planners?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm on the last revised September 11 report. Just the first portion that the applicant will obtain, the soil removal permit, the tree preservation permit, and the NJDEP RFA permit.
We agree to comply, yes.
And the next three are just waivers that we'll be requesting, which is the sidewalk to be installed around the perimeter of the site?
Yes. So, and the ordinance requires sidewalk around the perimeter of the site. So where we're adding new parking, the ordinance would require sidewalk along the new parking. We're asking for a waiver from putting that sidewalk in. With the understanding is that people, mostly the employees that come in, are going to park here and they're going to walk directly to the building. So their sidewalk isn't necessary there at that location.
And number three is the off-street parking spaces located within the front yard setback.
Yes. So again, the ordinance is not, does not want the parking to be located in the front yard setback. However, in this particular case, there's already an access driveway here located at that location. It's ideal to put the parking off of the existing access driveway that's there. Their ideal parking spaces are located right to the front door, perfect location for the parking space that should be located. We are providing additional evergreen screening along the front to screen them out from Hortal Street. So we're seeking that design waiver for allowing the parking to be located there.
And then another design waiver, number four, that all parking areas are to be paved and enclosed with curbing?
Yes. So the proposed parking will be paved and curbed. What happens is there's a loading area in the rear where the outdoor storage is located. That's on a gravel surface and not enclosed with curb. That's an existing condition that was previously granted the waiver under the prior site plan application in front of this board. So we're seeking that, again, that same waiver for the existing condition.
Well, is that, sorry.
Has that, has that condition back there changed since the prior approval?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Why would you need another variance for it?
We're just being conservative. It was in there, so we're asking for it again, just to be sure.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's actually a design waiver. It's a design standard requirement. You're looking for a waiver that, expanding the parking lot, expanding the storage area. They're not, when you get into compliance, it's still a parking waiver.
Okay.
No objection to it, but.
Right. Correct. Thank you, Jake.
Moving on to number five, any change proposed hours of operation, numbers of employee, or the existing use?
No. So it's still going to be the same use, American Pile Equipment and Company. The number of employees is nine. The hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Friday, Saturdays from 8:00 AM till noon. And I believe those were the same hours that were approved under the prior site plan application.
And any, number six, any specific information as to the type of the equipment or material to be stored in the expanded storage area, and also the height of that equipment?
Yes. So the material that's stored back in there, it's construction equipment. There's a backhoe. There's a crane with a boom. There's steel piping. There's, you know, containers. It's general construction type of equipment. American Pile Driving Equipment Company, they repair, they maintain, they sell, they lease that type of construction equipment. So that's what's stored within the outdoor storage area. You know, the height of some of those, I mean, the boom is certainly high. You know, some of the other equipment, 12-foot-high. It's a backhoe. It's that kind of element. You know, we're proposing an eight-foot-high vinyl fence in the front with evergreen trees to screen it out. You know, it's the same outdoor storage area that was previously approved by this board, and the board wanted the eight-foot-high vinyl fence. So we're proposing the same treatment that was there to screen that outdoor storage that previously was approved.
Are there any height restrictions with respect to the equipment there, Jake? So with respect to the storage area, the applicant agrees to comply with the ordinance. You could put a backhoe that went 500 feet in the air.
Yes, yes.
Number seven, that the applicant should confirm that the project will comply with the sound and vibration requirements of the borough ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to B1, with regard to fertilizer rates for primitive vegetative cover in the seating schedule is not in accordance with the Cervel standards, and it should be revised.
Yes, we agree to comply.
We actually agreed to everything in the reports.
Yeah, yeah.
May not be necessary to repeat everything.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless there's something special you want to highlight, that's fine, too.
Right.
No, I don't think there's anything special left. Moving on to Mr. Leon Cavallo's report. Since we already went through most of the waivers and the variances required, I guess I'll just go through some of the things we haven't spoken about. And if anybody else on the board catches something we haven't spoken about, we can discuss that as well. Number two, vehicular circulation for emergency vehicles.
Yes, so in essence, the existing driveways will still provide access for emergency vehicles. The main access driveway is 30-foot wide and extends to the front of the building as well as straight into the outdoor storage area. So we feel there's more than ample room for emergency vehicles to get into the property.
And then moving on, I believe, to number four, which is the landscape plan that Mr. Leon Cavallo found acceptable, but the board may require additional screening if necessary, which the applicant would agree to.
Six of its own. Good?
And just number seven, architectural elevations or characteristics for the proposed outdoor storage area. I think we touched on that, but not exactly.
Yeah, I mean, in essence, it's going to be an eight-foot-high vinyl fence that's white, similar to the exact fence that's out there today, except for we're going to add the landscape screening along the front with shrubs and evergreen trees to soften it from Hortal Street and enhance the view.
I am finished with my direct examination. If the board would like to ask any questions?
Anybody have any questions? That's it?
All right.
Next witness?
Thank you.
Yes.
We need you to raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to the board in this matter is true and correct, test of your ability?
Yes, I do.
Can you give us your credentials, please?
I'll start with my name. It's Allison Coffin. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've testified in Sayerville previously.
You need a motion to accept their credentials?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
And Ms. Coffin, what did you do to prepare to testify today?
I reviewed the application. I met with the applicant. I read the professional review, and I visited the sites.
And what did that tell you?
What we have is a property that's 91,656 square feet. It's a nearly square lot with frontage on Hortal Street. It's abutting the Raritan River Railroad line to the rear, and the property is developed with American Pile Driving Equipment LLC's facilities currently. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing site to expand the outdoor storage, enclose it behind an eight-foot-high fence, and create eight new parking spaces. I guess they're not new. They're being relocated from the area that's going to be used for outdoor storage. The lot is zoned SED, Special Economic Development, so the use is permitted. And we are requesting two variances for the changes that the applicant would like to make to their property. The first is for the parking, which will be located within the front yard, and that's not permitted. And the second is for the fence height. We're proposing an eight-foot fence where a maximum of six feet is permitted. So the variance relief that the applicant's requesting is bulk or C variances, and there are two tests in the municipal land use law for this type of variance. The first is the C1 standard, and that's the hardship standard. I don't think that's applicable here. And the second is the C2 standard. It's also known as the flexible C, and it's justified when the purposes of the municipal land use law are being advanced by the requested variance, and the benefits substantially outweigh any detriments. It's my opinion that these variances that we're requesting tonight are C2 variances. The proposed variances advance the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of uses, in this case, industrial use. And purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment, which we are achieving through the increased landscaping and providing that solid eight-foot-high fence around the outdoor storage. So the benefits of the variances that the applicant is requesting include advancing those purposes of the municipal land use law, providing for a site plan that meets the needs of this business as it has grown, which allows it to remain on the site. And lastly, providing for a much more desirable visual condition by having landscaping installed along the frontage of the property where not as much currently exists. There's no detriment to the variances that are proposed. Though nonconforming, the setbacks proposed for parking in this case, the applicant proposes landscaping to screen these new spaces so there'll be no visual harm caused by having these parking spaces within the front yard. The landscaping buffer, that's an existing condition. That's a waiver condition. And the fence height of eight feet that's proposed is intended to match the height and type of the fencing that was required by the board at the time of its 2010 approval. So we're merely matching what was previously required. So it's my opinion here that the benefits of the variance substantially outweigh the detriments. The last test for a variance is whether or not it will impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. And here we have a use that's permitted at an intensity that's permitted, so I don't think that there's any harm to the intended purpose of the master plan.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Coffin?
Any questions of the planner? Everybody good? Your next witness?
I think we are finished unless the board would like to hear from Mr. Kennel or the regional manager of APE New Jersey.
I don't think so. Does anybody want to talk to him? No? Do you want to sum up, or?
No, I think our case in chief was pretty clear.
Make a motion to open up to the public? Second? Anyone from the public like to speak? Anyone from the public would like to speak at this issue one more time? Anybody from the public like to speak? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public session.
Second.
All in favor? What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Chairman, I propose we, a motion to accept the application and grant it three design waivers and two variances.
I have a motion, a second, and a second. I guess we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Okevich?
Yes.
Councilman Delena?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Lee? Mr. McEnon? Ms. O'Leary? Mr. Velosen? Chairman Tai?
Yes, and thank you for staying in Cervel.
Thank you very much.
Very good presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you keep the board?
Well, Mr. Tate, you can come anytime.
It's a lot quicker.
A1 stays here, though. Is that A1?
Yeah, I told him I want the board. He was going to take the plan.
Hey, the, 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 the existing...
I'll get it from the panel. Come out, nice. And Hartele Street's one of those streets, dead-end street.
Add on to the next? Yeah, I got the mics on. All right, Grump Industries, you guys are up.
Chairman, I have a conflict with this application, you can step down.
You gonna stay for pizza?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to also bring to the board's attention that Mr. Downey, he was at my house 15 years ago.
Anything more recent than that? Anybody else have any? Mr. Downey cited my house probably 10 years ago. Anybody else? What's that?
Me, too, 15 years ago.
All right, in fact, Mr. Downey was in front of us in, about a year ago. I think we may have raised these issues, maybe we did, maybe we didn't.
Maybe we did, maybe we didn't, okay. And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, the members of the planning board are transparent with respect to any potential conflict or issue with the local government ethics law. I've heard what they had to tell me, and based upon the, the, some of the cases that I've reviewed, these are not contemporaneous issues, these are very old connections with the applicant, and so it's my view that they don't present any existing conflict for the board members who've identified these issues, and I thank them for doing that. I assume, Counselor, you don't think there's any conflict, do you?
I do not, Mr. Rogoff.
And so I'm certain that all, all the members who've had work done by the applicant on their houses many, 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 many years ago will still give this matter their objective review without any influence whatsoever as it relates to, you know, some prior work that this person may have done on their homes, because that's the standard. If anybody feels they can't do that, then they should step down. Does anybody feel they can't decide this matter fairly based upon the facts, this gentleman, the applicant, may have done some work on their home many, many, many years ago?
No.
Then, as far as I'm concerned, these board members can hear the matter.
Thank you very much. We have jurisdiction, and it's your turn.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is George Pressler, I'm an attorney of law of the state of New Jersey, I represent the applicant, Grump Industries, number two. With me this evening is Mr. Downey, who is a principal in the applicant corporation. Also with me, in case we need some testimony from our engineer, is Anthony Petro, it is not...
Now, what's that?
Your nameplate.
You don't wanna know who I am, anyway. Gone.
It's on my side.
I've lo, I've lost my identity, and so you're just gonna have to remember my name.
It is, it is not my intention at this time to call the engineer, however, if any of the board members have any questions, he is available to testify. This application is for premises located at 302 Journey Mill Road in the borough of Serable. It is commonly known, it's also Block 58, Lot 3.02, and it is located in a special economic development zone, as shown on the official tax map. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and certain waivers of, of site plan requirements. Also included in this application are three bulk, bulk variances for minimum lot area, front yard, and side yard. That is my presentation at the time, and Mr. Rogoff, I do acknowledge receipt of Mr. Cornell's report of September the 11th, and I also acknowledge receipt of Mr. Leon Cavalllo's report dated September the 10th. We have no objection to saying being entered into evidence, and we will comply with all the requirements set forth. I will point out to members of the board that included in Mr. Cornell's letter on page two are the requi, the waivers that we are requiring, which are six, and it's set forth very accurately, and I thank you very much, Mr. Cornell, for being so explicit.
So you got six, six design waivers and three variances?
Yes.
Mr. to the board's record, those are all existing...
Yes.
...conditions, they're not being modified, this is basically a building addition with the concrete lined brackets in the building, that's the extent of the application, no other site-related requirements.
For my first witness?
Yes.
Mr. Downey.
So you wanna raise your right hand? You swore affirm the testimony you're about to give the board in this matter, is it true, best of your ability?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Downey, would you state for the record what your position is with the applicant, with the corporation?
Well, it's my business, it's the business that owns the property where my office is.
All right, now, how long have you been located at, at location of 302 Journey Mill Road?
Bought the property in 2008, and I believe on Mr. Cornell's writing, it says when we were in front of the board for this building was 2009, eight, no, 2008.
Have you made any other improvements to the building since that time?
No, it's exactly the way it was. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I take it back, though, we, we actually, last year, we went with the Gillette's, and they did, were gracious enough to allow us to buy 50-foot on the back, so we did, we were in front of the board for that.
Mr. Rogoff was present at that time, I believe.
Yes.
With a nameplate?
Yes.
You had one when you started.
Yeah, we've been, like, three times in the last year.
Apparently gonna have to have a backup.
Now, Mr. Cornell raises an issue concerning the aesthetics of the proposed building to be constructed.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, go.
Can we assume that you are going to be constructing the building very similar to the existing building?
Yeah, I actually have, and that was my mistake, I, I was in a rush to, to get that through, I, I didn't supply the architectural plan, which each of you should have, it's a basic, you know, front, left side, rear of the property, so what I was looking to do, because over the roof, you know, it's a concrete building, bedrock, you know, bedrock building, and I actually put, over my front door, we put like a slate roof, so I thought it would look good to put, you know, standing seam roof on that back part, also, this front roof is actually a hip roof, and I was gonna do the same thing there, but do a standing seam.
Now, also, Mr. Cornell's communication, would you explain what the proposed use is going to be for the...
Sure, sure, so you could see a difference in the height, what I'm proposing to do is a 12-foot-high ceiling, and I was actually gonna build this, that my existing building is concrete, I was gonna build this out of wood and do a concrete board around it to make it match, so it looks the same, so no one will really know the difference, but the reason why I'm doing that is 'cause I wanna, like, heavily insulate it, 'cause what I've come to find, when I did the building originally in that warehouse space, we got nice high ceilings, minimal insulation there, the heat, it would be expensive, so, you know, I got like different issues with, like, spackle, paint, different things that we need to keep warm, I'm trying to keep that with, like, you know, the radiant floor heat in there, and this way, it gets really cold there, because I guess the river, so like, when I have my air compressor to fill up the trucks, that won't work in the winter, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of issues from the heat, and I just didn't wanna heat and all that, and I could use that space for, like, repairs on the trucks or what have you, or if we have to cut anything, anything small like that, so I just wanted it as a small heated area, 'cause the ceiling is like, I think like 18 or 19-foot, that it trusses, and the trusses are like three-foot, so it's pretty high, and it would be just like a lot to kinda do that, and, and as far as the placement of it, the way this building's set up, there's not really anywhere else I could put that space, you know, that would, you know, work out logistically, so that's why we chose that spot, you know, even though it, it has some variances.
How many square feet is that going to be?
It's about 1,100, it's 20, basically 22 by 50.
Now, in Mr. Cavalllo's report...
Is that the right math? No, it's...
Could you tell the board what the construction materials are to be?
I went through that, I, I'm doing the two-by-six walls, truss roof, you know, standing seam roof, unfinished, windows are gonna be like that, they're just fixed windows, they're not gonna open.
Outside, outside wall finishes?
Outside wall finishes, I'm putting cement board up, and then it's stuck out to match existing building.
And are you familiar with the neighborhood?
Yeah, of course, it's...
Tell the board some of your neighbors that, that are there.
Well, we got Z Brothers next door, it's all, yeah, it's all, all commercial, um... Yeah, it's, it's all, it res, uh, there's no residential nearby.
I have nothing further.
Anyone have any questions of the owner? Guess not.
That's our, that's our presentation.
All right, I need a motion to open up to the public? Anybody in the public like to speak on this matter? Would anybody on the public like to speak in this matter? Seeing no one speaking on this matter, we'll take a motion to close the public? Second? All in favor? Nice, have it. What's your pleasure, board?
Chairman, to make a motion that we accept the, approve the application and grant the waivers as identified in Mr. Cornell's report.
Any questions, all in favor? Roll call? Yeah.
Mr. Okevich?
Yes.
Councilman Delena?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yep.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes, and thanks for staying in Serable.
Thank you for your time, thank you. Thank you very much.
Some housekeeping issues? Go over?
You're welcome.
Our August, or September 18th meeting is going to be canceled, our October 2nd meeting will be canceled, next time we will be here is the 16th of October? And then we have a pretty full agenda after that, right on.
Actually, at this point, there's applications that are pending, you have affordable housing on Main Street for Mr. Kaplan, that is in technical review, and also Riverton Project, some revisions for Bass Pro, as well as some other phases of the application, that's in technical review, that may get, before the board, before the end of the year, maybe November, December.
Oh, we off?
I don't see some brick and mortar soon.
Nothing more? Make a motion to open to the public, now that everybody left? Second? Make a motion to close to the public? All in favor?
Make a motion, we adjourn, somebody said beat...
Yeah, there we go, and, second? All in favor? Thank you for coming, thank you for coming out, we will see you October 16th.
That's the best grilled mouse pies I've ever had. Nobody knows how to... Rustinos. Stonies, Rustinos.
Always doing stuff now?
Yeah, I've done work eight more.
Oh, 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 okay. What's he putting in? Oh, okay, oh, yeah, so, so that...